It being seven oh two on Monday, December thirteenth, we'll call this regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Abiger.
Present.
Mrs. Scarnier.
Present.
Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. LaFrenier is absent. And Mrs. Plahvin.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Jolinas.
President.
President.
And Gino DeVito.
Student president.
President.
Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
The first item on our agenda is open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Moving on to item C, recognitions, we have our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients of the class of two thousand twenty-two. Dr. Pellegrino?
Excellent. So I'd actually like to call Mr. Jolinas to help me out.
Oops. It's my cape.
I knew you were.
I'll back signal for you, don't worry. So, you know, each year we like to recognize our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. As you know, these are students who actually are scholars, they're in the top twenty-five percent of MCAT scores. So it's really exciting that they're giving this award, which also provides free tuition to state schools. So it's actually a very big deal. It's the first of many scholarships that these students will be eligible for. So I'm really excited to have a couple of our students be able to make it tonight. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jolinas to call out some names. And what we'd like you to do is come on up when your name's called, shake your hand, we want to make sure you get on camera, we want to make sure you recognize the school committee.
Brianna Boateng.
I know, I see a larger short.
Alexandra Lucier.
So, and at this point, there are several other students who could make it tonight, but we do want to call out their names to be recognized. Ms. Jolinas?
Sure. Caitlin Cameron, Olivia Charette, Lily Como, Rebecca Cormier, Emma Dresero, Jonah Hosington, Allison Kane, Quinton Leemec, Katrina Magoon, Madison Margra, Leilani Markley, Jamal Michael, Emily Russo, and Emily Shouse.
Congratulations to all recipients. Thank you very much for coming and meeting our school committee. So I appreciate you guys coming up and this is congratulations, frankly, on the first scholarship of many. Don't forget to apply. All right, thank you.
And as a former John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipient, congratulations. I do just want to point out that it is for state schools and the past three mayors are UMass Amherst grads. So just to throw that out there. Next item on the agenda, item D, the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Schwartz to pass and adopt the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number E, reports of the subcommittees. Facilities Subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Well, the Facilities Subcommittee did meet on November sixteenth, and it was, we had a very short meeting, and I'll just summarize some of the things that we discussed. I had mentioned that the piers under the canopy of the middle school has been pretty much repaired, as well as the gutter repairs. There were some severe leaks on the north side of the gym building, which water was coming down over the wall and the back door was pretty much rusted, but it was only a rust stain as opposed to rusting. So that has all been repaired. I'm very happy to see that taken care of. And then we discussed the second proposal or revised proposal from Ty and Bond about renovating the GHHS and the middle school athletic fields. And we discussed that with Mr. Hawk in great detail. So it looks like we pretty much accept the proposal, it's just a question of what is going to be done in-house, and where can we get some money from the city to upgrade those fields. And so in due time, that'll come around again. Mr. Anderson had noted the Facilities crew were in the midst of replacing and upgrading exterior lighting on all the school buildings. I made a point to look the other day, and yes, the high school, middle school, Elm Street, Helen May, I didn't get to Waterford, but they're lit up like Christmas trees, so that's going to certainly add to the security of the buildings. And Mr. Abiger mentioned how Daca was behind the bleachers at Watkins Field. Mr. Anderson mentioned that he would look at it and see what can be done in that area. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz, is there any questions, comments, or concerns on the report? Moving on to Finance Subcommittee, Attorney Palavan.
The Finance Subcommittee met on Monday, December sixth. We went over the expense report review, including the revolving funds. The food service revolving fund has changed dramatically because we actually did receive some reimbursement funds, and all other accounts are financially healthy. In review of the packet, we talked about the athletic director, and that there's a shortfall there as the city share will be transferred at the end of the fiscal year. There was also a shortfall in the subnurses line, which we received a grant that's been awarded. It'll be a hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year and a hundred thousand dollars for next fiscal year, and that money will be used to cover the subnurses and some temporary administrative support to assist with contact tracing. The other line that we looked at was teacher salaries, and the bulk of that will be covered from school choice. There was one other line that we went over that it was just a timing issue, and then another piece where there was a contractor position that was, that cost more than what had been anticipated. And we went over the project updates, the Landry Auditorium project, the LED lights that are at the outside, like Mr. Schwartz had just mentioned. We also discussed the small fire that had occurred at the elementary, the new elementary school that morning. And we talked about the scholarship funds, which later on we will be going over, and the Finance Committee voted in favor to send it to the full committee. And that is all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Palavan, is there any questions, comments, concerns on that report? Moving on to the Transportation Subcommittee, Attorney Palavan.
The Transportation Subcommittee met on Tuesday, December seventh. We went over how transportation is going currently. Mr. Hawk provided us an update that things were going better with a few minor issues with certain bus routes and busing. The second matter we went over was discussing whether the timing of the, when, I guess, when the new elementary school opens in the fall, what is the timing of, you know, when school will start in the morning? And Mr. Hawk informed us that NRT had said they would be able to do an earlier start time for the elementary school for next year, and that because of the amount of children that are going to need transportation, most likely will need a tenth bus when we only have nine this year. And then in January, we're going to get a further update from NRT and discussion around those proposed routes. And that is all.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on the Transportation Subcommittee update? Moving on to item F, Student Advisory Board Update, Mr. DeVito.
Hello. So the fall play had huge success in early November with many people going to support. And then GHHS did an outreach night at Holy English Village on November first, which went well, and another one is scheduled for this upcoming month. Gardner went to Coomban for the Thanksgiving Eve game, in which we lost thirty-four nothing, but we fought hard and it was a good game. The cheer team once again qualified for Nationals down in Dallas. The girls' cross-country team and boys' cross-country team competed in the all-state meet. The girls placed eighth out of all the teams there, and Tyler was the sole boy competing for us at the state meet. Student Council had a toy drive to collect toys for local schools around the city hall and other local businesses, and all donations were sent to the CAC. We would like to thank everyone for their support on behalf of the Student Council. The winter sports began their practices on the twenty-ninth. All's running smoothly with mask wear calls and such as that. November twenty-eighth, the Gardner High March Man participated in the holiday stroll playing various Christmas tunes leading to the lighting of the tree by the El House. Upcoming for them is the winter concert held, to be held on December twenty-first at seven PM. Boys' basketball had their first games, both JV and varsity against Auburn. Both were good games. Boys' hockey had their first game, and they won three-nothing, and girls' basketball is their first upcoming game this Wednesday, an indoor and outdoor track, as their first coming meet this Thursday.
Thank you, Gino. Any questions, comments, concerns? And that concert's in the gym this year because of the renovations in the auditorium, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item G, new business. Item number three, three, four, three, second reading of policies. Mrs. Hurst.
Yep, we have five policies tonight for second read. BGB, policy adoption. BGE, policy dissemination. DGF, suspension of policies. BHE, the use of electronic messaging by school committee members. And BIA, new member orientation. So I move that we adopt.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Palavan to adopt the policies as presented. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, item number three, three, four, four, COVID nineteen update. Dr. Pellegrino?
So as you know, right now, you know, the numbers in the state, you know, as well as the numbers, you know, in the school system, you know, have been going up. Our school nurse leader again has just been phenomenal. We had, as you know, we had a vaccine clinic recently. I do want to make sure that you know, you know, there were some protesters there. We did, you know, make the news with the protesters. But I also want to say some good came out of it. So I did get a call from the Commissioner of Desi, who said that he's very willing to come out, as is the governor, to the next vaccine clinic. So they just want to come out, show their support for Gardner and all the things that we're doing that are right. So they were actually very pleased with our response and all that we're doing. And the Commissioner actually noted Gardner, so we've had a couple of conversations before. And we're doing so many things really well. So I'm glad to be recognized, you know, by the Commissioner. So I think that's a, I think that's a good thing for them to come out, and hopefully it'll work with the governor's schedule. I guess they have a scheduler, the governor, so I don't have a scheduler, but there is a scheduler for the governor. So with COVID nineteen, we do have, the mask policy will still be in place through January. I did get some more information where Desi will most likely continue beyond January fifteenth. That's what the word is right now, but there's no official policy at this point. Right now, the mask mandate, their mask mandate will be done January fifteenth, although we have no, we have not taken any actions in the health, in our health committee to repeal that even on January fifteenth. So right now, the mask policy is in place, and we intend to keep it until we start to see the numbers go down and it's safe for us to have masks off.
If I can add to that, just citywide, the data that we're seeing right now, Gardner is still the sixth highest location with tests, positive tests in the state. We have a positivity rate at about nine point three percent right now. State average is around six percent. We've got two hundred and thirty-seven active cases right now in the city. Since March of two thousand twenty, we've had about thirty-two hundred cases total. Those sixty-five have resulted in fatalities here in the city. So that's just the city's picture overall. If anyone saw the governor's announcement this morning about the state releasing two point one million antigen home test kits to a hundred and two of the three hundred fifty-one communities in Massachusetts, Gardner was selected by, as, by the governor as one of those committees to receive those tests. However, we don't yet know how many we're getting, nor how we're getting them, and nor how they'll be distributed. So when that information becomes released, we'll be sure to let everyone know, but we just don't know that yet. Any other questions, comments, concerns on our COVID nineteen update?
I just wanted to say that I was one of the volunteers at the clinic, and even though we were made aware of what was going on outside, it didn't seem to really affect what was going on inside. There was a lot of volunteers, things went really smoothly, the kids were, you know, some of them were kids. I'm sorry. But the best thing, though, was Becky McCaffrey's dog, who would come over and put his, put her head on kids' laps and stuff like that. So despite, you know, anything bad that happened, I think it was just, it was a real success.
In the end, we got a hundred and eighty students vaccinated, so I think that that's a good thing. You know, not to mention, I thought Mr. Murphy, the high school, the middle school principal, did a great job running a movie, having, you know, they were able to write on the window in these special markers. So I think the kids, other than probably getting the shot itself, having a good time.
Was that the projection as well, a hundred and eighty?
That's what, that's how many shots we had. Yeah, and we, all of them were filled.
So it was a successful session?
It was. We actually were able to sign up a few people. We, at the very last minute, we found out we were getting not only the shots for children five through eleven, but we also got adult vaccines as well. So we had some adults that got vaccinated as well.
That's great.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. Last meeting, there was mention that the school were starting to run short on masks because so many kids were attending without masks. Has that improved with the request that they start bringing their own?
Yeah, we have, I have not heard that, that people need masks at this point. We still have a reserve of masks.
Yeah.
They're just less comfortable.
Yeah.
So right now, yeah, and I've, I've been over, obviously, at the, at the schools a lot, and I noticed a lot of kids, I was letting kids out of cars at Elm Street School, for example. Everybody was coming in with a mask on, so, and if they forgot it, they ran back to the car and grabbed it. So I think that's, that's a great question. Thank you for reminding me to mention that. That's a great idea.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item number three, three, four, five, the field trip for the Gardner High School cheerleaders to Dallas, Texas for their Nationals competitions from January twentieth to twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at which all students will be accompanied by a parent. Dr. Pellegrino?
So this is obviously, as you know, these happen very quickly. We got it on the agenda as soon as possible. This is something where one of our teams, again, for the second time in my tenure as superintendent,
Yeah.
have made Nationals. So I think that's a big deal. I think it's, I think it would be wonderful for the cheerleaders to be able to go down and participate. We have already taken a lot of steps to make sure that things are safe. Parents will be going down. The athletic director is also going down with them too, as the administrator.
I also feel like it's worth pointing out that half the team is new, and there's no seniors. That it's, it took two years of people who hadn't really cheered before because of the pandemic last year, not having any seniors on a team like some other teams have, that then to make it to Nationals, that's very impressive in my opinion. Any discussion? Or is there a motion on the floor?
Move to accept or move to approve, right?
To approve.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mr. Abiger. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Great that they're going. I think it's great for the city of Gardner, especially great for the cheerleading team and for Gardner High School. To finally be recognized and noticed.
Yeah. I can say, I came to decorate my office yesterday, and they were here from eleven to eight PM doing choreography yesterday in the auditorium. So they're putting a lot of hard work in. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, three, four, six, Gardner High School Scholarship Funds. Attorney Palavan or Dr. Pellegrino?
Sure, I can do it. So for, I think it's, I'm looking for it in the packet here. The motion is on page thirty-one. It's a very long-worded motion, but basically the idea is that we're going to be able to take the funds that are, the different funds for the different scholarships and have that money invested so that the scholarship funds can make more money over time, and then that will allow us to give out more money with each scholarship. And this wording is to just allow the treasurer, collector, and the, is the, for the city of Gardner, the custodian of the scholarship trust fund to then invest that money. And the Finance Subcommittee is supporting this and voted in favor of it at our meeting. So I move that we adopt this motion.
Is there a
I'll second that.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I think, I think it's a great thing. I'm just surprised that the school committee is closer to those scholarship funds than just today. I was suggesting to somebody that maybe the school committee just should oversight that account maybe twice a year or something like that, but that's only my thought. I've done a little research, and the current company that has those funds is rather, is an independent person, and he has a larger firm that does all the clearing of the stocks and other things he sells. He has another company do that, a larger one. I would like to see the treasurer to move that money to someone like Raymond James, who has the Rockwell Fund, which we all know has done an excellent job. And I'm just thinking that we need to, we need to support success or to ensure success if we, if the city went with a company that has larger resources and flexibilities. And I understand there are concerns or issues with the multiple accounts and the accounting process. Somehow that needs to be resolved or should be resolved. But I would just like to see that money go into a, into a larger, more diversified investment company. Again, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to mention, and I know it's in the letters that were received in the packet, but for some of the scholarship funds, the people who are involved in creating them and running them, this is something they've been asking for as well, because the money just, it hasn't been making the money that's necessary to make sure we're giving out enough money in scholarship funds every year to the students. So I think this is an important thing to do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, three, four, seven, School Improvement Plan. Dr. Pellegrino?
So for the school improvement plans, we're actually, we've broken this up, and tonight, it's going to be Gardner Elementary School will be presenting their school improvement plan. As you may remember, we, Dr. Gogan presented our district improvement plan, and you'll note, you'll notice some very, very strong similarities between the school improvement plan and the district improvement plan. We made sure that we're trying to focus as much as possible on large, aggressive goals, but only one goal. So we want to make sure that we're not overtaxing the system, and we're making sure that what we're doing is, we're doing it really well. So with that, I'd like to have, actually, and I think it's important to note, Mr. Martin has, for the past week, been the principal of both Waterford Street School and Elm Street School. I've already heard a lot of positive comments from, from faculty, in the union about his presence in the school. Not presence giving out, but presence just being there. Although maybe you did, from the comments that I got, maybe you did give some presence, I'm not sure. But, you know, he's been down, just very present with students, understands our MTSS system, and is going to do great things at Gardner Elementary School. So, Mr. Martin?
Hi, everyone. Hearing me okay?
Yep.
So, welcome and thank you for having me. Good to see everyone again. I'm Mr. Mayor, School Committee, anyone else who's watching. So I'm here to just, as the superintendent mentioned, present the Gardner Elementary School School Improvement Plan. So this obviously is Gardner Elementary School, even though there are two separate buildings, Waterford Street School and Elm Street School right now. But having taken over both buildings, we're starting to transition early, and I think that'll really help us facilitate the merger come next year. So, and I, and I'm going to present our improvement plan in the form of the, some questions. So I'm going to present it in terms of the who, the where, the what, the how, and the why of the Gardner Elementary School Improvement Plan. And so I'll get started with the who. As taking over both buildings, I obviously know Waterford Street well. I've been there, this is my fourth year as principal. But I don't know the staff, the culture, the processes, procedures, systems at Elm Street School. So one of my big goals this year is to really get to know who they are at Elm Street School. So again, to facilitate the merger. So that's one of our, one of my big goals. The where really centers around our vision. So the school improvement plan is a three-year plan, and I like to start with the end, where we're going and where we want to end up. And so the vision for the Gardner Elementary School is that we become a community where all members experience joy, achievement, and care. And so all members includes, obviously, our primary focus, the students, but also the families and also the staff. We want all, everyone to We want all, everyone to achieve that joy, achievement, and care. And so when I talk about joy, you know, from a student perspective, obviously, kids who look forward to coming to school and enjoy being at school, that often begets academic achievement. So that is one of my main goals. And obviously, fun, and incorporating some fun either during the day or after school or at night through some activities is important. But also making sure the learning is engaging and thought-provoking and, and done in a way so that students actually enjoy the learning component as well. With regard to the families and joy, you know, we want a positive vibe from all our families when they send their kids to school. We want them to enjoy learning about their activities. We want them to enjoy attending some of our events. And then the staff, and I do believe staff that derive joy from the really important work they do very much will be better teachers, better counselors, better, better staff. And when they're better, their students achieve more. So that's, that's the joy component. And as I mentioned, joy forgets achievement. And so achievement is obviously one of our, also, our, our, our big visions for the, for the next three years. And, you know, academic achievement kind of speaks for itself. That's obviously a primary goal. But we also want to consider social and emotional achievement. We want kids to be able to socialize. And they learn a lot of those skills during the elementary school years. We want them to socialize effectively. We want them to be able to regulate their emotions. And so we want to do things and infuse curriculum and instruction opportunities to enable them to do that. And then, lastly, care. We want, we want all members of our school community to feel cared for. It's as simple as that. You know, and I'll get into a little bit more on the how we achieve that. But I feel that positive relationships amongst all our community members, I feel a sense of belonging amongst all community members is really important and, and something we're striving for. So in terms of the what, what I, the what component basically is, is what does success look like? What is, what does it, actualizing our vision look like? And so what I'm really talking about is criteria. So one of my big goals this year and into next year is to really align our criteria, align what assessments we're going to be using to measure, hey, are we achieving joy, achievement, and care? Are we moving towards our vision? And if we're not, what can we do differently? So that is the, the what component. We'll do that, obviously, through some of our major assessments, but also surveys, you know, different proactive things that we do with kids to see, you know, how they're doing and what we can do to help them. Now, the meat of the school improvement plan centers around the how. How are we going to get to this vision where all kids are achieving? All kids and community members are experiencing joy and care? And this is really the four strategic objectives that are up there. And I can best encapsulate the four objectives, the how we're going to get there through this, through, basically, we want equity and success through MTSS. That rhymes, which helps me remember it. So, you know, equity, when we talk about equity, I know the superintendent has mentioned it in many school committees, and it's a big focus of his and ours. It's really, kids need different things to succeed. And we know kids are at different places. And so, but yet, we want all our kids to succeed. And so the multi-tiered systems of support, and that systems of support is really key there. We want kids who need different levels of support to get that extra level of support. And so the first, we break, as the superintendent, I'm sure, has mentioned to you, there are three tiers in this multi-tiered system of support. So the first tier is what all kids in the system get. And so my first two strategic objectives really center around. The first one says, what are we going to do for support and for social and emotional learning? And so that tier one is saying, what are all kids going to get for a social, emotional, learning curriculum? And is it high quality? And us working to make sure it's high quality. The same goes for the second strategic objective, which is looking at what supports kids need at a tier one level, all kids, for academics. And so ensuring our curriculum is rigorous, quality, engaging, all those good things for a tier one level. And then for those first two strategic objectives ties very much into the third one, which is really looking at data. So when we talk about the MTSS system, we're talking about systems and supports that we create based on data. So really, that third objective underpins the first two objectives. We always want to look at data to say, hey, are we, is our support systems working or is it not? And so creating systems and cycles to ensure that our social, emotional learning is happening and achieving, and that our academic learning is happening and achieving. That third objective is to really, for me, especially this year and early into next year, is to align the two schools to say, what are our systems? How can we sure all kids get the support they need and the high-quality curriculum they deserve for social, emotional learning and academics? And then, you know, obviously, there's, you know, a lot of steps involved in there. And I've outlined them in terms of action steps, in terms of how we're gonna do that. The first couple of years, again, is a lot of alignment, or I should say, this year and into early next year is to making sure that we're doing things the Gardner Elementary School way and to make sure that those systems are doing well. The third really objective is us looking at data to hone, refine, improve those systems. And then the fourth strategic objective really centers around something that does underpin all of this, which is our relationships and partnerships with families and our community. I really feel that's the most underutilized source of support in our, in our kids' learning, which is the families and the community. There's a lot of opportunity for us to partner with families to ensure kids are improving academically, improving socially and emotionally, and again, achieving, experiencing joy, achievement, and care. So that is the fourth objective. We're really gonna work to expand our, you know, our relationships with the community. We're gonna work on aligning. I've actually already started that process. I've already scheduled the Combined Parent Advisory Council. We've already made steps to align and combine our PTO. And I also want to expand. I don't just want it to be a core group of very involved parents. I really want to reach out so that all members of the community with a variety of experiences, backgrounds can participate. And, you know, so, so those are kind of the major strategic objectives. And I will say, you know, I'm learning Elm, Elm Street School, and I know they have MTSS systems in place, these systems of support. But I can tell you, from Waterford's implementation of MTSS systems, I've already seen the benefits. We have had a lot of success from a social, emotional learning standpoint in terms of, you know, a good portion of our student body now is really getting high-quality social, emotional learning. And it's showing in a lot of our data. We're getting kids the support we need proactively. We're looking at data at the start of the year to say, these kids might have some things going on which could really, giving them some tier two or tier three supports. And that's what that tier two and tier three is about. It's tier two's a little more intensive support. Tier three is a, is, is an even more intensive intervention to make sure we're getting those kids that, that stuff ahead of time. So I've seen gains at Waterford. I've been very proud of the work, of the work Waterford's done with MTSS. And I'm hoping to bring that to Elm as well and really kind of align that. And then, and so our, last, I want to mention the why. You know, I'm very, very, and this is kind of the why I take this school improvement plan so seriously, why I take my job so seriously, is that I've been very fortunate. I've worked in all five Gardner Public School buildings. So I've worked at Gardner Academy, I've worked at Gardner High School, I've worked at Gardner Middle School. In the last four years, as I mentioned, I've worked at Waterford Street School. And now I've completed the, the five-school cycle. And I'm now at Elm Street School. And I will say, you know, all the work at all the schools is incredibly important. And I value everything every teacher, every administrator, every counselor does at each school. But I will say, I really feel that the work done at the elementary school level is so profoundly important because it lays the foundation for, for future academic success and future life success. There's all types of correlative evidence that shows how kids do at elementary school, socially, emotionally, academically affects their lives down the road. So I, I take this school improvement plan very seriously. I work very hard on it. I take the work that's in, that's outlining the school improvement plan very seriously. And, and I really appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me. And that's, that's it.
I, I think it's, I just think it's important to know, because I knew he wouldn't do this. Because Earl Martin's a doer. One of the things when he first started as, as principal, I'm gonna tell you, I used to try to meet with him, and a lot of times he'd be busy. He'd be flying to put out, to answer a decision, constantly being called out of the office. At this point, he has a great team, a phenomenal staff, and they've really come together. Now you can, I can actually go over, and we can, we can sit down for thirty minutes, forty minutes, and we can sit down and have a conversation. And then after that, we can go out for an hour and walk around the building and look at instruction and talk about what are our next steps, meet with staff. And I have to say, it's great having Mr. Martin as well at Elm Street. The one downside is, when I go through Elm Street, usually, I, people say, are you the mayor? Are you the president? They don't know who I am. And so I get a lot of attention, so it's actually very ego-boosting. However, when you walk through Elm Street School with Mr. Martin, I am chopped liver. If you don't like chopped liver, yeah, like, I don't like chopped liver, so it's terrible. Mr. Martin is beloved by the students and has great relationships already with so many of the faculty there. The thing that he's not telling you as well is, he's already made huge gains academically at Waterford Street School this year and hit some milestones just from some, the cycle of data that he's looking at in terms of having, working with teachers who are collaboratively to respond to student needs. I don't know if you want to talk about the dibbles. If you don't want to, I'm going to.
No, it, you know, I appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. No, it's, you know, it's really a credit to the, the staff there. They're really taking some of these MTSS systems and approaches seriously. And we've worked hard to help the students read. And so that's, that's really such an important thing, because as, as we all know, that's, that reading is everything. And, and so, so some of the early results have yielded some real positive gains that the kids have had in reading, more so than any other year that I've been there. So, you know, we still have a long way to go. I'm still hopeful we'll continue that progress. But the early reports are encouraging. And so, you know, and I do, I credit the staff because, you know, I can point to goals and I can help create systems, but they're the ones doing this really hard work. And I'm just really thankful that we're starting to give them some systems and supports to, to enable that success.
So to be a little bit clearer on that, some of his classes have gone from five percent reading on grade level at the very beginning of the year to over eighty-five percent reading on grade level. He has some students, I say, he, your teachers, you know, and your team, have gotten people, have gotten students already who are now reading at the end, for the, for the grade level at the end of the year. That's what this is all about in terms of challenging and having a rigorous curriculum for all students, challenging everyone and pushing. So those students who are already at grade level for June will still be given, given reading assignments that will push them even further. So I'm really, I'm very pleased with the work that Mr. Martin has done. But again, he's not a talker, he doesn't like to brag. But he and his team have done just a phenomenal job at, at Waterford Street School. So I, I think you deserve some credit for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, a little his, a little history fact. The superintendent says, you know, I don't like to talk as much. I am more of a doer. And now, in nineteen nineteen, the Gardner High School was Helen May at the time. A little-known fact, the school colors were green and white. And the class motto was "facto non verbo," which means deeds not words. So that's some, the message I'm carrying to Elm Street is that it, I'm not going to just talk about what we're gonna do. We're actually just gonna get to the work. So that's, that's my hope.
Are you providing a test on that later?
Yep. It'll be a Latin quiz after.
You know, Mr. Martin, hearing that you're analyzing the data to solve a problem brought back a lot of DBQ essay memories.
Yeah, the mayor was a former student of mine. A very good student, I might add. But, you know, the advanced placement class that he took, there was a lot of analysis of, of data and results.
And a great teacher for it.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, do you envision the, when the new school opens, do you envision the advisory council to be as large to combine the two schools?
Yeah, no, I, obviously, too big can create a council that's unwieldy. But at the same time, even right now, if I were to take the two bodies and put them together, it, even at this point, it wouldn't be too unwieldy. So, so you know what? This is gonna be a great test year, actually, because, again, I'm combining a lot of stuff.
Yes, you are.
And we're gonna see how it goes. So, you know, even right now, my plan is to, at the two schools, you know, to really get to know the systems, get to know things, do separate things, separate meetings, separate newsletters, separate things along that line. But really, my hope at the start of next year, the January twenty-twenty-two, is to really start that process of combining everything. Because that's where we're gonna be next year. And it'll just make that smush together a little bit easier. So, and, and better, hopefully.
Thank you for your comment.
Sure, sure. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. A Bear.
That's why I've never referred to you as Earl Martin. I refer to you as the Earl of Matten.
One of the things I love about Mr. A Bear is he's great at nicknames.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you and congratulations, Mr. Martin.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Item number three, three, four, eight. Superintendent Progress Support on Formative Goals.
So I gave you each a handout, just to give you a quick update on where, where we are for the goals. Because again, you know, my goals, although similar to what Earl was saying, this is me leading the district, absolutely. But it's working with a lot of great people. Without my team at the district level, without the administrators we have and the teachers we have who are, who are willing to step up to the plate, this, these, these accomplishments wouldn't, wouldn't come to fruition. So, you know, one of the first things that we talked about, what, one of my first goals is increasing and improving school and family partnerships and creating a culture of dignity. We have been having our equity, it's a, it's a school, a school district equity team meet on a monthly basis. Some of the meetings lately have been a little bit sporadic because of timing. But it's really helped bring us, bring us together in terms of defining what is a culture of dignity for the entire district. So if we're gonna start with equity, we first have to define, what do we mean by equity? What, what does this mean in our schools? And what is the culture of dignity? So we're actually doing the book study, and it's been going very well so, so far in terms of defining what it is we're talking about when we talk about equity and what we need to do to make sure all students feel safe and included in our community. The second piece is, we did hire building equity leaders. And they're all implementing at each one of the schools, No Place For Hate, which is in the Anti-Defamation League. It's a program that they put together specifically to, to help schools move forward in terms of addressing hate in our community, in our country, and specifically in the schools. And what they do is, they actually pull together a team of people. And each school now has a team of students. There's at least one parent and staff members who are on the, who are on the committee. And they actually do work, they, they create three different events. That's the initial step. They're gonna have three different events addressing equity in the schools. And so they're all designing that now. Additionally, we're taking part in, the, the Office of Students and Family Support has a program, and it's called Supporting a Deeper Understanding of Culture and Its Role in Family Engagement Work. So we're really trying to understand how we can get better at this and what moves we can make. So we're part of, at the district office, we're part of, we're part of this group. And each one of the equity leaders will also be getting some professional development around this. And finally, I think it's really important to note that we're very focused on our marginalized populations, making sure all feel, all students feel, again, a sense of dignity when they come into our schools. And we're focused on marginalized folks, specifically students with disabilities, our English learners, our students of color, and our students who are LGBTQ. So that's where we are right now in terms of our work on that goal. The second goal is for the reduction of inequity and discipline and dropout rates. So right now, each school now has an MTSS SEL and PBIS team. So the SEL is obviously Social Emotional Learning. They're focused on school-wide mental health supports. They're looking at behaviors. They're looking at mental health, behaviors, and discipline in the school system. PBIS is Positive Behaviors Intervention and Support. And that's specifically looking at how do we address behaviors in the And that's specifically looking at how do we address, um, behaviors in the, in the, in the schools to make sure that we're reducing the number of office referrals from, um, from classrooms? Because classroom referrals are typically where you wind up with suspensions. We're trying to reduce those numbers of suspensions. Viv done, the PBIS team has done such a phenomenal job, quite frankly. That's what's kind of gotten us on a circuit of going to, um, uh, and presenting at different conferences, a couple international conferences and a national conference on the work they're doing on PBIS teams and the MTSS teams. So I'm very excited that, um, that they're taking all, um, those steps forward and they're looking at the data and again, responding to the data in each one of the schools. The, the, all the goals around student learning, the fidelity to tier one academic supports. I'm really excited about the, the work we've been doing around this. We've, uh, we now have, um, building leaders in each, in each school. We have grade level leaders in, um, English, math, um, at, and actually, there's two leaders in, in each, in each one of the, at grade levels. And they're leading our common planning time. And the common planning time started with just developing a list of what are the standards we're teaching? What do the outcomes look like? What does mastery look like? And really, we're defining that as the exit exam. Sometimes that's MCAS, sometimes that's DIBbles, as Mr. Martin talked about, um, which is that reading assessment that we have, or sometimes it's an AP exam. So we look at those outcomes and then we design the lessons around those outcomes. And then after that initial lesson, we should be responding to data. So our first step, I think we've done a, it's taken a while to do this first leg because we're really trying to shift our focus from looking at lessons and curriculum to focusing on standards. Really looking at each one of the standards in every subject and assessing where kids are and responding to that. So every student masters the, the standards that we need them to master. The tier one, actually, the, the tier two SEL behavioral supports, the MTSS teams are now meeting not only tier one, they are meeting on a tier two level, which means that the tier one is what everybody gets. As Mr. Martin said, the tier two is really about if students need more than tier one in order to access their learning and to, to, um, uh, to be, um, to continue to be a productive part of our, of the community. If they need more, then we give them more. And that's where tier two is systemic. Again, it's, it's, um, I kind of call it plug and play. We have programs and we have these specific programs that address about eighty to eighty-five percent of our students. Um, so it makes it so system, uh, systematically, we have a way to address these things without saying, okay, so what does this individual student needs, which is really what the tier three is. And so we're not at the level of tier three, but we have designed those tier two programs. Um, and now we're looking at making sure that they're done with fidelity, um, in the classroom and, um, in terms of outside the classroom as well. Um, finally, the professional practice goal. I'm extremely, um, pleased with the Lynch Leadership Academy. Uh, at the district level, I am participating, um, with, uh, Joyce West and Kathy Gogan. And we're actually meeting, um, with a coach with some other districts as well, Fitchburg, Lemonster, Winchton, to discuss, well, what's going on in the schools and how do we move our schools forward? So we're actually getting coached on our coaching to co, for principals to coach. So it's, it's actually really, um, uh, you know, we have to, we have to think about our own thinking and think about the steps we're doing. It's very strategic. It's actually made it so we have, we have a lot of meetings during the week. So strategically, we might, we have, um, three different, um, strategy meetings at the district level with, between Joyce and Amber working with me, um, on the SEL, MTSS SEL. Uh, Dr. Gogan working with me on the academic portion of it. And then all of us getting together and saying, how does this all fit together? So there's a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions with a lot of very specific agendas, um, trying to move everything forward. So I'm really pleased with the help they've given us in designing that system, um, and the coaching and support we get. So that's what's going on in my neck of the woods.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Good job. Trouble is, I understood it. That makes me nervous.
All right, moving on to item number three, three, four, nine, learning walks. Do we have Dr. Gogan on the boat?
Yeah, um, make sure. Kathy, you there? Dr. Gogan? She's muted, she's on. You're muted, if you're, um, can you hear us, Dr. Gogan? She's just unmuted. Kathy, you there? Make sure. It's connected. Kathy, you there? Dr. Gogan?
She's talking, let's see if we can.
Yeah. Turn the volume up. Kathy, you there? I do not know why she's not coming through. Kathy, can you hear us now?
Let's try the actual, yeah, the regular speaker.
Yeah, okay, we got you on the regular phone now.
Okay, great. So I, I actually, I, I don't have a, a presentation on the learning walks, but the learning walks were in my report. So I can briefly discuss the learning walks from this year and kind of talk a little bit through my report, if that's okay?
Sure.
So we did our, we, we typically do two learning walks a year. We do one in the fall and we do one in the spring. And, uh, we've created a set of reports to compare the, not only the fall to the spring, but also how we're doing from year to year. And so we started to collect this data in the fall of two thousand eighteen in this, in this manner. So in my report, um, I was just letting everyone know that we did our first learning walks in the month of October for all five of our schools. And, um, I'll just go back into my report just a little bit, just to give you a brief update. Um, we use the rigor rubric when we do a learning walk. And we have a team of folks go, go out into classrooms and observe classrooms for a ten-minute period of time. We have several different teams of two or three people. And we try to broadcast throughout the school so we see as many classrooms as possible. On any one given learning walk, we, we typically see between fifteen and twenty-four classrooms, depending on the number of folks we have on the team and how many teams we have. Um, we go out for about an hour, so each team sees anywhere between four and six classes. So before we go into the classrooms, we all get together and just make sure that everybody knows the protocols and we, and we, uh, answer any questions if we have any new members on the team. And then we go out and do the learning walks. And when we are finished, uh, we, we use a rating sheet. While we're doing the learning walks, we calibrate our ratings, uh, after each classroom observation. We'll go out into a hallway and just sort of chat amongst our team so that we are looking at the same things and rating them the same way. Um, at the end of that, we all get back together again for a short debrief where we share some of the observations that we made. And we tally all of the ratings together from all of the teams. So this is a real aggregate picture. We're not looking at or targeting any classroom in particular. We're looking for trends and patterns for, um, instructional practices that we're, that are on the rigor rubric. And so we take that tallied information and, um, for each of six categories that are on the rigor rubric. And those six categories are alignment of task, excuse me, alignment of the task to the, the, uh, MCAS standards or that, not the MCAS standards, the DESE standards and the district standards. The second category is the level of higher order thinking that's being asked of our students, uh, uh, for the task that they're doing. The third category is student engagement, to see what level of engagement the students are, have at the time. The fourth category is how are the teachers checking for understanding throughout the lesson? Fifth category is what are the resources used so that all students, um, have access to that learning? And the sixth one is access for all students. So those two kind of go together. Um, in the, in the past, we primarily focused on the first three categories because if we don't have alignment to the standards and we don't have high-order tasks, uh, thinking tasks for the students and they're not engaged, then the things below can't really happen at, at a successful degree. So just to summarize, uh, when we started in the fall of two thousand eighteen doing these learning walks, um, we had approximately sixty-nine percent of all of our classrooms having an alignment to the standard and the task aligned to the objective or the standard that was written on the board. Um, and higher order thinking was at twenty-seven percent of all classrooms. Student engagement was at forty-three percent. Um, checking for understanding, resources used and access for all students was, um, below forty, uh, around the forty percent range. Um, so comparing that to the fall, we've had slight improvements. Obviously, we had, um, we had COVID and we still did learning walks during COVID, but we did them virtually. And it was a little bit harder for us to really get a determination on some of the categories, such as engagement, because sometimes the students had their cameras offed, so we just didn't know the level of engagement. So it's not that it wasn't there, but we couldn't really measure it very well. So we didn't want to compare our results this year to last year because it was comparing apple store ridges. So I figured doing a comparison from when we started to now, in the fall of two thousand eighteen to the fall of two thousand twenty-one, we had a seventeen percent increase in alignment of task to standard. We had a seventy-four percent increase in higher order thinking across the classrooms. We had, um, a thirty-seven percent increase in student engagement and an eleven percent increase in checking for understanding. Now, these are district results. Uh, so this is all of the classrooms that we saw across the entire district in all five of our learning walks. Each school has their own individual data as well. Um, we did have two areas and resources used and access for all students that actually went down a little bit. Um, and so, you know, we, we've really been focusing on the higher order thinking, so we're really happy that we had such an increase there. Uh, and our next steps will, will be to look at those resources that we're using and making sure that all of our students have access to the learning that they need to have. Overall, we had a seventeen percent increase, um, from two thousand eighteen to now in all categories, if we, if we put them all together. So what do we do with that information? When we're finished gathering all of this information for each school, we send that information in its, um, in its percentage form and the comparison form to, so that the teachers and, or the administrators and the staff can look at that data and say, where are the strengths that we have of what we're doing? And what can we build upon to make better what we're doing? Um, from a district standpoint, we look at that, um, when we're meeting with our MTSS academic teams and our SEL teams to look at the practices we have district-wide, the resources we have district-wide and the professional development we have planned so that we can increase in the areas that we're, where we're not performing as well and make sure that we sustain the areas that we are performing well in. And I think that is, is about most of my report. Are there any questions?
Doesn't look like there are any questions, Dr. Gogan. Thank you very much and good job.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, three, five, zero, the curriculum coordinator's update. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? This item was included in your packet. Seeing none, moving on to item number three, three, five, one, grant administrators update. This was also included in your packet. Any questions, comments, concerns? Next, we have item number three, three, five, two, the special education update that was included in your packet. Any questions, comments, concerns? Item number three, three, five, three, the CPAC update.
I'm hoping to have Katie Abbott come to our, uh, January meeting and to present on, uh, what the PAC is, what it does, and, uh, to try to help recruit, um, new people to, uh, take over when Katie's gone and just to let parents know too what, what's out there. Joyce, was there a meeting this month or?
There's no meeting in December. We usually have a meeting in December, um, but we'll start up in, in January.
Okay.
It's usually the third of the month.
Thank you. And just for the clarification of the public, I normally don't like to speak in acronyms and slipped on that one, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. All right, thank you. Item number three, three, five, four, the Massachusetts School Building Authority New School Building Project. Dr. Pellegrino?
We had a fire. Yeah, the building's still on time, um, on budget, so we're pleased with, with, uh, with the progress, um, overall. Um, we did have that, um, little fire of trash up on the roof, um, but didn't seem to set us back at all, thank goodness. So things are on time and on budget. I think that's the most important thing.
All right. Uh, item H, communications, Dr. Pellegrino?
Um, just a few things that I want to say. First off, I'm really excited the hockey team beat Oakmont three to one. That's a big deal. Uh, some ways, I guess, it might have been four to one because I think we scored on ourselves. So maybe that's four to zero, right? In a way, we scored all the goals.
It was accidental.
It, it was, it was. But I'm excited that we won it. It just shows that, um, you know, it's, uh, two of our, you know, um, our soccer teams made it to states. And this is, this is a big deal. And I think we're, um, again, just continuing to do the right things and good things come from that. So I'm very excited. I do want to say I'm gonna miss, um, very greatly, Mr. Abear, who's been a, just a wonderful support for the schools, for our kids, a focus always on doing what's right, very creative mind, ambitious, um, uh, pushing me constantly to, whether it's something as mundane as making sure there are enough trash cans, um, by the, by the tennis courts, um, but also thinking big and, um, trying to figure out how we can make Gardner Public Schools the great school system that we want it to be. So, uh, I'm gonna, I really appreciate all you've done for us, Jim, and I'm gonna miss you. Um, you know, on another note, you know, um, uh, the, the high school, um, staff did go today to, um, uh, Ms. Bulger's, um, funeral services for her son Curtis. Um, a very sad event when, um, a child tragically dies, nineteen years old. Um, so it's been very difficult for our community. Um, but the support, once again, from the faculty, from our administrators, everybody pulls together to support each other. Um, and, you know, frankly, it, you know, the schools are still doing what they're, what they need to do. We're still focused on our kids. Um, and no matter what setbacks we have, I think that just shows that we are very strong and we're a strong community. Um, so our thoughts and my thoughts and prayers and our thoughts and prayers, I'm sure, are going out to Ms. Bulger and her family, um, during this horrific time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, moving on to final comments of the school committee. We are going to do this in a little different manner this evening because I feel like it's a little more appropriate. I'll go first and then we will go reverse around the table, uh, and end with you.
Yep.
Uh, not yet. We're saving you, we're saving you for cleanup there, Jim. Just a couple of stuff on my end. Uh, we did receive last minute as a school committee invitation. What I mean last minute, I mean, I got the final confirmation after the meeting began. Congresswoman Trahan will be in the city this Wednesday, January fifteenth, uh, asking, inviting all of us to a roundtable event that she's hosting in the conference room downstairs on the first floor. She's also invited a couple other city officials. Uh, regarding the infrastructure bill, but how this affects school department and school committee things is there's a large portion of the infrastructure bill that's put for, um, internet connectivity and Wi-Fi infrastructure so that students can have access to that type of, uh, environment in their homes where they live around the city. Uh, so that's gonna be a topic of discussion at that. Uh, so that's going to be a topic of discussion at that, so if anyone can make that, do let my office know, uh, so we can let the congresswoman know. Uh, it's okay if you don't have an answer now, but again, that'll happen Wednesday at four PM in the mayor's conference room downstairs on the first floor of Gardner City Hall, and I understand it does overlap with the new school building meeting, uh, but if you are able to attend, uh, it's not often we get to have a roundtable discussion with the congresswoman. So I feel like that'll be important, plus she knows what's in the infrastructure bill better than some of us do. I do want to extend my condolences on behalf of the city as well to the family of Mrs. Bulger. Uh, I think the amount of people that were there at the funeral services today and at the wake yesterday shows that when issues happen in this community, the community really does stand up and stick together. I remember that when there was the other, uh, tragedy of a student who lost a parent in a car accident when I was still at Gardner High School. And it's, it's something that you take the devastation that comes from that and you turn it into hope because the community does get together in such a strong way that even if you are the one grieving, you know you've got enough people, you've got a million people behind you just standing there rooting for you. So I do want to thank the community members for standing up for the people who have really just had a tough week, week and a half here in the city. Uh, I was at Gardner High School when they first told the guidance counselors and the first response they all said is what do we, how can we help and what do we need to do? And I think that that's, says a lot about Gardner Public Schools staff, is it's not react in a way that's how can I take care of myself first? It's what do I need to do? How can we do it? We're a team, let's help each other out. And I think that that really stuck with me and that's going to stick with me for a while too. I also do want to thank the family of, uh, Mr. Andrew Boucher, uh, who passed away recently for establishing a scholarship fund in his name for our students who are looking to pursue civic education, uh, civic engagement, I should say, here in the city. Uh, that's going to give back to the community for a long time if Andrew didn't already give back to the community a lot. Uh, I do also want to thank Salvador Auto Group for their recent donation of a thousand dollars to purchase new instruments, uh, five hundred dollars at Gardner Middle, five hundred at Gardner Elm, uh, for our band programs there. Uh, as, again, as a trumpet player, I can tell you how much I appreciate seeing our bands grow like that, uh, as the second mayor to play the trumpet now, as I look at him in the back row. Uh, and then lastly, on my list before, uh, just closing out, just a couple updates on the city's inauguration ceremony for those who are being sworn in. Uh, again, we will have the Monday, January third at ten AM in this room, uh, with the city council just to legally be sworn in as required by mass state law at Monday at ten AM. Uh, there will also be the public, more larger ceremony on Thursday, January sixth, at six PM in Perry Auditorium here at Gardner City Hall. Uh, Judge Mark Goldstein, who is the presiding justice of the Gardner District Court, will swear in the school committee and the city council. Uh, we are waiting to hear if there's any other special guests coming. Uh, we do know that Justice, uh, Georges of the Supreme Judicial Court will also be coming as well. Um, as that information, uh, gets released, we'll send that out in more emails. Uh, retired Gardner High School history teacher, John Gardella, has agreed to be the master of ceremonies for the event. And, uh, we will, on the Monday ceremony here, we will have the, uh, ceremony end with God Bless America by the Gardner High School Select Choir. And, uh, Gardner High, Gardner Middle School's chorus classes are also going to be joining for one of the ceremonies as well, however, they're still deciding which one of the two that they'll be there. Uh, and Thursday night, we'll also have a small contingent of the University of Massachusetts Minuteman Marching Band with us as well. Uh, so if there's any questions on the inauguration, you can direct those to Colin Smith or Rachel Roberts in my office and they'll, they're the ones who are doing the lion's share of putting it all together and they'll be just happy to get any answers you need as well. Mrs. Cormier?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to address too that there's been a lot of sadness in the city over the past couple of weeks. Um, it does remind us what a strong community we have and I'm thankful for that, to help everybody through, um, everything. Um, personally, I had lost my father-in-law three weeks ago. Andrew Boucher was a family member as well. Um, having to say goodbye to both of them and then finding out about Curtis as well has been very difficult. Um, and like we were saying, community really helps you through. Um, Andrew was a great person, did a lot for the city and what I want to remember is the smile on his face, the pat on the back, the how you doing today, and we all need to pass that kindness along if we can learn anything from Andrew. Um, he, he was a great person to the community, loved the kids, loved the city, and I hope we can pass along the kindness that he always wanted to show. Um, and I also want to thank Coach for everything you've done. You'll always be Coach. And I appreciate giving me motivation to do what I'm doing here. I hope I can continue like you did and, and push us forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz?
I'll be easy tonight. I'll relinquish my time to Mr. A Bear.
Mr. DeVito?
Just based off what you guys are saying, like with the Ms. Bulger situation, my prayers will certainly, and the stuff you guys are saying about Gardner being community is definitely present in the schools. Like I know the senior class, we made cards. I know sports teams that are sending out cards and making donations to the, very bad environment. It's just like, it's a cool thing to see in times like this. It's just like, it's sad, but at the same time, like you said, we're building off of...
Thank you. Attorney Pelavin?
Um, I also wanted to give my condolences to the Bulger family. I know it's not easy to go through something like that, um, and I do think it's amazing every, how everyone has pulled together. Um, and then to Coach A Bear, I think I met you when I was, what, ten years old?
And you survived.
Yeah, I played basketball for you and then coached with you and obviously now in school committee with you. You've done a lot for the Gardner community over the years and I want to thank you.
Mrs. Hurst?
I'd also like to extend my condolences to the Bulger family. And, um, this time of year can be a hard time of year for a lot of people, um, so make sure you're checking in on people because just telling them, you know, well, you can call me if you need anything, sometimes it's too hard for them to make that phone call. And Coach, I've been sitting beside you for six years. And every once in a while, you would lean over and tell me what's what and what I needed to do and give me some advice. And you were probably the one who was voted most likely to not turn your sound on when you were trying to talk on Zoom. But I am, I am seriously going to miss you and our, our talks.
Thank you very much. Coach? I am going to take off my mask for one time because I've had it on all day. Also, my sincere prayers and thoughts with the Bulger family. Uh, I lost a brother at eighteen. Uh, I saw what my parents went through and I, I, I can imagine what the Bulger family is going through now. Again, we, 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 our thoughts are with them. As for my eight years here, um, I couldn't have got by without the help of my colleagues, uh, not only the ones that sit here now, but the ones that were on before and good luck to Ms. Layton, who will be coming in here in January. I did talk to her at a football game and she asked me about, uh, would I support her for school committee? And I said, I don't know. I said, I'm on the school committee right now. You are? I said, well, at least you know who I am. Um, but again, um, to, to steal a phrase from one of my favorite movies, which is All the President's Men, uh, my final remarks to the school committee is that, uh, as Ben Bradley, played by Jason Robar and Robert Redford and, um, uh, Dustin Hoffman, who played Woodward in Bernstein, uh, if anybody remembers the movie, but it was about Watergate. And Jason Robar, Ben Bradley said, "The only thing, okay, that's resting on this is not only the integrity of the Washington Post and your integrity, but democracy as we know it." And the only thing resting on this body, okay, is not your integrity or the integrity of the Gardner School Department and the Gardner School Committee, it's public education as we know it. It's under attack, as you've seen by the incident that happened the other day. Again, it's, it's a tough and a daunting job. And again, the people, I urge people to participate and you people in my mind are all heroes because you did participate, okay? And you took the time and the effort to try and do good. Keep it up because it's not going to get any easier. And for my final remarks, again, to steal from somebody else, and this is General Douglas MacArthur, in his final farewell to the long gray line of the Corps of Cadets at West Point, he said, "Old soldiers never die, they just fade away." Well, in this case, old basketball coaches never die, we just dribbled into the sunset. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Hurst?
Coach, we have a little gift for you here.
Oh, thank you. It's a license plate?
Got to open it.
I hate, my grandmother used to always save the ribbons and the paper.
Oh.
I was? Well, thank you very much, okay? I'm a school committee member for life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach.
It's been a pleasure. I'll be right back.
Coach, do you have a motion for us?
What is that?
Do you have a motion for us?
No. Do I get to get the last gavel?
Yes, you do. Yeah, yeah. Motion made by Coach A Bear. Is there a second? Motion made by Coach A Bear, seconded by Attorney Pelavin to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.